Our neighborhood's right over here. And we've seen the streets look out. They look new someplace. It's wild. Things are up.
I can't get it to connect.
Yeah, we'll catch you back up, but I just want to ask her just to provide the Good evening. It is Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty five, at seven P. M. In the absence of the board chairperson, Michael Hording, I will be running the meeting as the vice chair. Um, I move to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees' public hearing to order. Mrs. Schultz, will you call the ball?
Trustee Hording, absent. Trustee Hartremeyer?
Here.
Trustee McAbby?
Here.
Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I declare the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and health as our own.
We are here tonight to have the public, the second public hearing for the permissive motor vehicle license tax hearing. Um, do you want to swear everyone in who would like to speak tonight? So if you're going to speak tonight, you're welcome to do so. Uh, our law director will swear you in at this time, so if you're
Just please stand and if you raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Would you agree? Thank you very much.
So I move to open the public hearing for the permissive motor vehicle license tax.
Second.
Trustee Hartremeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Okay, it is now open, so with that, we'll go right into comments. So our first person that has signed in is Kathy Lale. If you
Can we do a back over line?
Sure.
If you don't hear?
Yeah, that's fine.
Since we have certain places.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I'll quickly go through these on my slides. Can everybody see up there since the TV's working now? So the purpose of today's hearing is to present the proposal for an additional five dollar permissive vehicle tax. We're also here to explain the current funding challenges that we have, um, outline how additional funds will be used, and to gather community feedback. So how our roads are funded? So this is, townships live under statutory requirements, and they're also fund accounting. So what that means is fund accounting is every single fund that we have in a township is all separate. So the general fund is separate from the road funds, the police funds are separate, the fire funds are separate. Um, and we have multiple road funds that we use to fund the road department. So for the current funding sources for road include our road and bridge property taxes, which is an inside mileage, which is point seven five mils. We have a motor vehicle license tax, which is levying through the state of Ohio. They pay it when you go to register your motor vehicles, and then we get a small portion of it. Um, we also get a small portion of the gas tax money, so the state of Ohio collects that thirty eight cents on gas tax. And the townships get five percent of that thirty eight cents. And then it gets divided up across thirteen hundred and eight townships, and then we get it based on our road mileage. We also have a county permissive motor vehicle license tax. So the county has levied three motor, five dollar motor vehicle taxes. So right now, when you register your vehicle, you pay fifteen dollars, and that all goes to the county. Uh, we do get thirty percent of that county money. So it's like four dollars and fifty cents that we get from that fifteen dollars that you're paying. We also have a residential incentive district, a RID, which is another revenue source that we have. That's property taxes. The legal authority to do this, under Ohio Road Vice Code Section four, five, oh, four, point one, eight, one, it allows townships to levy an additional five dollar fee per registered vehicle. It applies to the unincorporated areas of Fairfield Township only. Um, Fairfield Township currently does not collect this tax that we are allowed to do. So we would propose enacting this tax to directly support roadway infrastructure. So it would not be used for any other purpose other than to fund road department purposes. Our current revenue versus potential, so in twenty twenty four, we collected seventy three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighteen cents, which is that forty percent share that I was telling you about, the county's fifteen dollar tax. The proposed tax for five dollars, we don't even know exactly how much we're going to collect. Um, I know that we have over eight thousand households, and if you average three cars times five dollars, it can be anywhere from a hundred twenty five to two hundred thousand-ish, maybe two fifty. I just don't know. Um, I'll, I will make a call to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and see if maybe I can get an accurate count to see, you know, what that would actually be. Uh, Fairfield Township will retain a hundred percent of this tax, so the revenue per vehicle would rise from four dollars and fifty cents that we currently collect to nine dollars and fifty cents. Under the budget shortfall, so the Public Works Department, I did a five-year forecast, and you can see, um, starting in twenty twenty six, we will take in one point zero nine million from all of those sources that I read to you earlier. Our expect, our expected expenditures will be one point two eight million. So for next year, I predict that we will be a hundred ninety thousand dollars in the hole. Now, that may change based on, you know, our totals at the end of the year. In twenty twenty seven through twenty thirty, you can see that it goes up. Um, I budgeted three percent increase in revenues, and then about seven to eight percent increase in expenditures, because that's what it's been costing us for the road. But you can see that every year, our budget hole gets bigger and bigger. So it goes from a hundred ninety thousand up to five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, our infrastructure in a nutshell is Fairfield Township maintains eighty one plus miles of roadway. So basically, it's mainly all township subdivision streets, but we do have some larger streets, such as the end of Princeton Road from the bypass to the dead end. We also have Morris Road, we have Minnich, um, or some of the other good roads that we have. I think that's it. But anyway, we take care of a lot of roadways is the point. We have the third largest road inventory in Butler County. Um, for years, we have deferred paving and stormwater projects because we just didn't have enough money. Because right now, we do not have a dedicated road funding source, such as a road levy. Uh, and then we have curb and gutter deterioration that's already started, a long more stormwater projects that have not been dealt with. How the funds can be used, and so because these funds are for capital, they, you can only use them for capital, you cannot use them for personnel costs. So they would fund stuff like asphalt, salt, gravel, coal patch, um, curb and gutter replacements, stormwater pipes and jetting systems, road signs, landscaping, utilities, public works tools, equipment, vehicles, and most importantly, contracted services, which is the paving and the repairs. What this means for you, so if the board decides to enact this five dollar fee, we would, it would add on an additional five dollar fee, it would start in January. And so when you go to register your motor vehicle, I think right now, um, you pay right around fifty two dollars um, every year, if you do it for a one-year time, so that may increase to fifty seven dollars. It would be added during your annual vehicle registration, the tow cost per vehicle would be nine dollars and fifty cents, but every dollar would stay in Fairfield Township for the items that I just listed before. So under community benefits, it would mean safe and smoother roads. We would have faster stormwater responses. We would be replacing aging infrastructure. We would be reducing long-term repair costs, and it would be a better quality of life and property values for all of you. So we do want your feedback. Um, we want to know if you support this initiative. Um, do you have any concerns? Or do you have any suggestions for priority projects? So we can open it up for comment.
The other thing too is, I don't know since the last year, if you've had the opportunity to compile the amounts that we've spent on an annual basis for our road projects, because we have escalated those costs. Um, in terms of, um, we have been very diligent in increasing the amount of paving that we have done, um, especially in the last ten years. So we've been very proactive with our paving. We have done, I think last year, we did close to eight hundred, like, we're scheduled for about eight hundred thousand dollars in paving, because we did for many years, I would say about ten years ago, we were not paving as much as we should have. So we did a number of years where we increased our paving and we put more into that. So, um, the past, I'd say at least five years, we have put significantly more into our paving budget, and we've spent more on paving roads. So at some point, I think the public would be very interested in doing that, and just knowing that we have escalated our paving projects in order to get kind of caught up and to keep the roads as nice as we can. So it might, or might not make sense for us to keep paving at such an aggressive level, depending on what our funding sources actually are. So at some point, I'm looking forward to seeing that information.
I should, we researched it, we were able to find the last fifteen years, so we'll have that for you.
I'm asking, and that would be helpful, because we absolutely have been proactive on paving, and we have, um, spent quite a bit on paving in order to get, uh, to keep our roads as nice as possible, based on the money that we have. All right, with that, um, let's go ahead. We're very interested in what you have to say, one way or the other, let us know what you're thinking, okay? This is an opportunity for everyone to share their thoughts and let us know, okay? So first up, we have Kathy Lale. If you can, please approach the podium, uh, state your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
What is your priority to decide what streets you do?
Um, it's usually based on, like, our public works directors' recommendations. They'll go out and they keep a list, and they kind of keep track of which roads are in worse condition than others. And then they make a recommendation of the board, and the board, um, will decide. We actually are going to decide at the next trustee's meeting next week, what our priorities will be for twenty twenty six.
Okay, and, um, River Ridge is one of the streets in our neighborhood, and I've lived there for thirty eight years, and they've never once done anything to these roads. And if you go up that road as often as I have to, eventually, we're going to have to get our car aligned, because it is such deep ruts going up there every day. And even on the other side, going up in the north of Saratoga, that's exactly the same way, which I find interesting, because they resurfaced, um, part of Dixon, which, how ironic, is the name of Dixon, and they resurfaced, resurfaced that whole Dixon Street, which was newer than any of the other streets, up to Citation. And I just wondered why they decided to do that and not the others that were in worse shape. You don't have, okay, well, you might want to look into that, because I think that's totally cool.
Could we get with Mr. Bennett and have him get back up with the answer for that, please?
Yeah.
And I do know too that there is, um, we have had a comprehensive township road plan. I think we're in the process right now of re, like, reanalyzing that and rating the different roads. The thought process was, is we were starting kind of on the north end of the township and maybe to the south end of the township, so that would be the neighborhood that you're in right now. So I'm without, I have not seen what this year's paving recommendations are. I don't, I can't speak to whether it's on there or not, but, um, let's get Mr. Bennett in touch with her to answer that question, please.
Because it was just kind of interesting that they did that, and thought, oh, good, they're going to do the rest of the area, and then they just stopped. And that was the newest street in the whole area, so that didn't make sense. Um, you say five dollars per vehicle, is that for any other type of vehicle, like trailers, like, um, anything else that you might own in property besides your home?
Yes, so it would be any, any vehicle type that you would have to buy at the state, that you get renewed every year.
And you say that we're going to be in a hole, yes, moving forward, does that mean that this is a rate that you're going to want to try to improve or raise every year?
Uh, we could, the state only allows townships and villages and cities to enact two motor vehicle license tax. So the ceiling is twenty five dollars. So the county does the fifteen, and then that allows townships and cities and villages to do two. So we could do five dollars if we do it this year, and then we can only do one more five dollars, and then that's it. The cap is twenty five.
But that would still put us in a hole in the future?
Uh, it could. I mean, things keep going up. We keep trying to cut costs, but they keep going up, so.
Right, right. Well, I'll take this on next. Could you state your name?
Kathy Lale.
Kathy Lale, seventy four thirteen, Creighton, Missouri.
Okay, next up, we have Melody Fields.
That's me, but I really just didn't know about Bill, and I was trying to, you know, quiet her on reaching about it and stuff.
I just put my name on there, and she goes, hit me and so push and kind of.
Okay.
Something we have, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then we have Mary Alcorn.
You can, outside, I don't know. Um, my name is Mary Alcorn, I live at five, six, six, one Longmont Drive, and I've been resident for over three years. I don't really have a question, I kind of, after the last meeting, wrote a comment and maybe some thoughts. I'll put it out there in three minutes. So I stay here today as an active member of our community for over twenty years. I've seen a lot of changes in township, some are very good, some not so good, um, probably shouldn't have been. But the changes of the management of the years have started to make a real difference recently. And we noticed it, everybody noticed it. Um, about a year ago, in the same community, I heard members of board, members of community say, we are unseen. We are one family. We're coming together as a community. It's nice to see, and it's true, because when I first moved here, nobody knew each other. It didn't happen. I was not able to come to the township and say, I'm moving out. I'm bound to say to my friends, my coworkers and family, that I know all of these people. I work with all of these people, their family. So, um, as fast as that other road came, you know, near, uh, past, recent past, people coming together to community quickly turned. The growth, the stuff will kind of go on, but you could tell that a change had been made, because the team, the family was not working the other, you could see it. Um, being out in the community, I saw a lot of people, and heard a lot of people say, what happened? This is not what they used to do with events. This is not how they presented themselves. What's going on? It's almost like the glue in the factory of a well-oiled machine is, is here, it's on. I can't say what reason, I don't know, I can speculate, but I can't. But to me, if it was a well-oiled machine, that machine should not have fallen, because one piece fell off, and it did. They all crumbled quickly. I saw it happen. A lot of people probably saw it happen. So that being said, I'm not here to really talk about, you know, the taxes, taxes, because I support the township. But I do have suggestions for when, you know, the announced conflict. So the announcement came out, special meeting, this is a fact, nobody knew what the tax was about. No explanation. And a little bit further was announcement about the police health fund, health insurance. I saw many comments on Facebook, many comments everywhere, that people thought that the taxes were going to the insurance, and that they thought the employees or workers were not going to have to pay for the insurance like the rest of us. That's kind of what I saw, and I presented the county and said, no, all they were doing was making the change to their insurance program, so that they could have proper insurance at a lower rate. People didn't believe me. I don't care, I stand up for people like Lee then. So in the future, I would suggest, if you have those kind of meetings, maybe go to separate notices or explain exactly, so that they understand, so they don't come and go, I don't know what this is, I don't know. Um, and, you know, even heard people saying something like, well, what else are they hiding from us? What else is missing? What, what do we not know? You know, I saw people at the last meeting come that I knew from years ago when I first moved here, I haven't seen in years, and I've never seen anything. So you got their attention, but I don't know how it helped. Another suggestion is, after these meetings, I saw where answers were answered, but maybe a little bit differently. Because I think we all, as people, need to step back and take a breath before we answer, and sound like we're being defended, because some people were, not just, you know, not the board, but everybody. Take a breath, it's important. You want to say something important to the township. It's worth taking a five-second breath before you react, because reacting doesn't help fix the problem. It's just a vanity, if that. And So that, with that being said, you know, I just want to say that in my heart, I believe the board has our best interests, that is, I would hope, because they signed up for this job. I don't, I mean, I'm sure you get some compensation, I'm sure it's not much. You know, that's not my business. But you didn't do it because of the money. You did it to help. I also noticed that in the last, about a year, not as many of the board members have been at the events that they used to be. You saw less and less of the places that you wanted to see. Not sure why, but that's what it is. So, um, but I just want, that the board, as they think about this change, or any other change to make, to think about why they set up in this position, to think about what's best for all of us. Not for us, but for all of us, not just the township. I would do anything for any of these people that work here. They are my family now. So with that being said, it's one team, one family, and one view. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Just, um, I don't want to.
Yeah, you'll need to, just heard that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
My name is Deb Meyer, three, seven, two, nine, River Ridge, Illinois. Um, I was here last week, and I learned a lot, and I remember someone was going to, was making a commitment to find out what we currently spend on, we have made here a business, what we currently spend on expenses, and if there was another way, we, another place, we could get the money that we already had, or cut back on the paving, so that we do not have to raise these taxes. I've, I've not heard anybody address that. Anybody do that research?
There's no other funding source for us, those are the, the funding sources I listed.
And that was brought out last week, but there was a to-do list, a go home, go get homework, that somebody was going to do some more investigation as to, could we, maybe that was what you mentioned, that it's not been done yet. Uh, can we cut back on the paving at this point, so we don't have to spend that money? We need other options and everything, raise the money. The government, you are the government. Wow, we don't have enough money, let's go to the people, because their payments haven't been raised, their income hasn't raised, but we'll get it from them, because, you know, my dad always told me, it's two things in life are guaranteed, die and pay taxes. So here we are, there needs to be a way around this, so we'll have to raise taxes.
Can I make a comment?
It was, it was, uh, last week, but the other choice might be levy, which would be even more taxes. So that's what they have to decide and look into. But here's the thing, the levy's going to be more money than the five dollars.
It's not the taxes.
Well, we don't know that for sure, too, so, I mean, this, we put our trust in them, we, we go with them in, and we put our trust in them, so.
I don't know if I'm a lover, but I can't.
If they have to know, but again, that's what I said, stop, take a breath, think about what is what we are.
Yes, there was two ways that we can get that money. The, the five dollars per license, which will bring you in much more, I did calculations, that will bring you in much more money, unless you, and we figured at five, remember, if you figured five or ten dollars tax increase on a hundred thousand dollar, uh, property value. You have to raise it a whole lot more than that to get the same money for five dollars, because I owned one house. But yet, some, my neighbor has seven cars, so I'm paying thirty dollars for a hundred thou, three hundred thousand dollar house, and he's paying more than that with seven cars, you didn't have to raise that a lot. I believe we're paying, you know, we got no money, so we need to be looking elsewhere of how we can cut expenses. I mean, can we cut expenses so we don't have to tax people? That was what I thought the homework was, not, in addition to something besides, there's two ways to get more money.
As I see it, we've got three options. We can do a five dollar, we can do a levy, or we can figure out how much money we're currently bringing in, and we can target our paving plan to meet that objective, okay? And I believe that Ms. LePensey was going to look into, um, one, what our historical spending on the roads have been, because we did have, we put quite a bit of money into them the last ten, fifteen years, uh, probably the last five, six years in particular. Um, and we have to ask ourselves, based on the paving analysis, which is looking at a comprehensive which is looking at a comprehensive picture of what all the roads in the township look like, grading those roads, and then making, having our public works director make that judgment on how many of these roads are, need to be done right now, how many next year, how many the year after that. And then we can get some approximate values around that that tell us, okay, we think we're gonna need to spend this much each year. And come up with that actual paving plan, which I think kind of drives to that answer of, you know, how much do we need to be spending every year? Because we did do a concerted effort to catch up on our paving a few years ago. Should we be spending eight hundred thousand dollars every single year on paving? I don't know that the township can afford that. That's a lot. When I first came into office, I believe, we had to pull the numbers to make sure, but we were more in that four hundred thousand dollar range, but we increased it a couple times. The county was kind enough to give us some ARPA money, um, I believe, last year. So they gave us some extra money so we could do some additional paving. So sometimes we get one falls like that, too. So, but as I see it right now, we've got three options. The five dollars for road levy, or right size, and use the money that we have and pay according to that.
Just please state your name and address for the record.
Someone's name's Melody Fields, and I live on Shannon Drive, 6257 Shannon Drive. Is it just paving that we're talking about, or is it all road projects? Like, I, you know, the roundabouts are very good. It seems like we've gotten to going roundabout crazy very lately. Every second introduction I go to, you're like, "Oh my gosh, another roundabout," you know? And I, it does help some, but is, is that why the costs have gone up a lot? Because, you know, like this, just down here, it's like, that's fine, but I don't think we really needed the roundabout there. Or they're, like, going up Milliken Road, they're, they're everywhere, you know? And the one in the Swordsville West, just I was, that was a good one, because that always stacked up. But, and, so my question is, are the roundabouts and every road project included in this cost analysis?
Well, keep in mind, we didn't pay for most of those roundabouts.
That's what, that's what I wanted to pay.
We paid for about two hundred fifty thousand, the one down to a road, and that's the only one we paid for, right?
I believe so. And the county usually covers the cost for those. So that's the county, that's the engineer's office, and I would welcome you to reach out to them if you have comments or concerns about the roundabouts. That's coming from the county engineer's office.
I just wondered if this five-dollar tax was to add more roundabouts, you know what I mean? Because it...
And it is mostly to cover paving, because we don't have a dedicated source for paving. So yes, there are a lot of other projects that the roads department does, but we have roads funds to cover those. We just don't have, we have no source for funding for paving. So we take it from other places. We take it from our general fund. We took it from ARPA money the last two years. We've taken it from our RIT this year. So all the money we get in roads goes for the other stuff that roads does. We're asking for this to go toward paving, because we have no dedicated source for paving. So, and to another comment, I think I heard that our roads are great now. That is true, but they won't stay great if we don't allocate the money needed to paving. So we don't know what that is at this time. We have to have our public works director tell us, you know, a long-term plan. But if we don't spend the money on paving, our roads won't be good eventually. So, thanks.
But Milliken, Milliken's a county road, Liberty Bearfield's a county road, Towesville, Hamilton Mason, all those are county responsibility. Most of Princeton is, is in the state of the county. Of course, the Bobbass is state well. So, again, Morris Road, Tooney Road, Benning Road, and all the neighborhood streets. Maybe some Canal Road, some of those. And, and, you know, we have spent a whole lot more money in the last few years, because the cost to do it has, you know, doubled, basically. It's all based on the price of petroleum, and you know how much gas is now as how much was before. So we, we could have spent eight hundred thousand and still only done the same road miles as we did four hundred thousand.
That's a good point. Can we also get the calculations for each of those years on the number of road miles that we paid each of those years? Because I'd like to divide that out, because I think that brings up a really good data point that we can get. Let's quantify that, instead of being able to, um, how much we spent each of those years, and then how many road miles did we accomplish during each of those years as well? I think that's a good piece of data.
Eighty-one, eighty-one miles today, but we'll add more miles with new subdivisions coming along. And it does take a while for us to have to go in there and pay those. But still, it's more and more. So again, when you think about it, you had eighty-one miles and you had to do them every fifteen years. You know how many per, per year you need to do. And the cost for that is just extremely, you know, higher than it used to be. And, and, you know, I, I, I'd like to know, are you in favor of, do you want to vote on this? Do you want to vote for, for a tax, or you just want us to do it? I mean, how many people would like to have a chance to vote on the ballot?
I think we all should vote, absolutely.
And, and maybe, and maybe that's what we do instead of the five dollars. Because the five dollars is not gonna do it. We could do two five dollars, but it's still not gonna do it. What we need to do going in the future, okay? So we could put a small levy on the ballot and let everybody vote. And then you could decide whether you want us to maintain the roads, cut back on the roads, or go forward on the roads. And I'm, I've always been in favor of the people voting. Yes, you elected me, but I, I don't have any problems with putting it out there and letting you guys, not just you eighteen people. We put it on the ballot. We could put a quarter mil or a half a mil, whatever the minimum is. It would bring in more money. A mil, a mil today would raise about seven hundred thousand dollars, a little more than that maybe. So if we did a half a mil, three hundred and fifty thousand. And if you remember those numbers that were up there, that's more in line with what we need to keep going forward on our roads. And it's not just the paving. You know, we cut a lot of ditches. We, we maintain that right of way on all those streets. And if you drive around today and go in those subdivisions you don't normally go to, you'll see some cement work being done. And that's extremely expensive. We do that before we pave. That's the right order, not the other way around. But if you're, if you're willing to vote yes or no on it, I mean, it is up to you. I'm willing to put it on the ballot and let you, let you vote on it. And, and I saw enough hands that made me think that might be the way to go, because everybody last, last week was saying the same thing. You, you guys shouldn't be the only ones deciding this. And then I had some people contact me over the week who said the same thing. And that's okay with me. You have a question?
Yes. Uh, what would that approximately come out to for a one hundred thousand dollar value of your house?
I'd have to look that up. But if you go on the auditor's side, they've got a nice tool on there now, and you could calculate that.
But I mean, approximately, what would that do? Is that, is that gonna be another thirty, forty, fifty, hundred dollars?
I'd have to look it up. And then when you talk about a hundred thousand dollar house, there aren't many hundred thousand dollar houses in the county.
No, I'm just trying to figure out.
So, so, again, a three hundred thousand dollar house, you get assessed at a hundred thousand, and then you, you would do the, do the math. And we can certainly do that. I mean, that would be the next step if we want to put it on the level. If we would ask the auditor's office to tell us, you know, what would one mil, or a half a mil, or a quarter mil raise? And then it would tell us what it would, what it would cost to me. Yes, it'd be property taxes. It would, it would tell you what it's gonna cost you. And I would look on there and see what it's gonna cost me, and, and decide whether I want to vote yes or no.
That would be a lot more money.
It's gonna raise more money. So, so again, it depends on how it goes. I, I've said last week that I don't think five dollars is gonna do it. So I think, I think we ought to consider the two five dollars, which is ten. But that's still probably less than anybody's gonna pay on their property taxes if we put, again, I don't know if we do a quarter mil or a free textile mil, I don't know what minimum thing we could do on that. But right now, we know we have a deficit. We don't know the five dollars, whether we're gonna bring in a hundred and twenty-five thousand or not. So maybe we get one more year, and then we gotta decide what we can do again. When you do it, when you're doing roads, and that's right of way, not just roads, but right of way, you need to work further out than one year at a time. So it's real hard for whomever sets up here to decide how we're gonna get from here to there if we don't have a dedicated net comes through. And we, and we have, we've had some windfalls. It was your money, by the way. The ARPA money was your money. The federal government sent out here just passing it out to everybody, you know? And then they forced us to spend it in a certain period of time. And of course, the township, and I voted no on a lot of those expenditures myself, but they, we spent it. We spent every bit of it, several million dollars, okay? Some of the last ARPA money came through the county, and we did spend on roads. We cannot spend what we, spending this year, we cannot do that next year. We're already in an operating deficit, so.
Okay, so we've got a couple more people. You're gonna need to get sworn in. And then you'll have to state your name for the, um, of theirs. If you'd like to do that, you can. Anyone else would like to talk, would you?
Not gonna fix the road behind the Fifth Third Bank, Laura. We're not gonna fix it next week or next year.
But how am I gonna go to the bank? I busted the tire over there yesterday. Fix it.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and I think that the truth will help you guys?
You said that last week.
Okay, Michael Brown, fourth question. You said, "Put the levy on," and I understand what levy you do, "to strictly pay for paving." Okay, that's, oh, well, good. Uh, that's gonna cost me a lot of money. Ten dollars when I go get my license renewed, ain't gonna be that much. I want you all to realize, there's gonna be a school levy on ballot again. Think about that. I want my kids to get to school on bus. I just live halfway up here past the school. She ain't far enough to get on a bus. You're gonna put her four miles out. From my house to Friscus is four miles. I am not walking my kid down more than that. Remember, when that school levy comes up, think about your kids on their buses, because it's gonna come back up again. I'd rather pay the stupid tax on the train.
So if I understood you right, you're in favor of the five dollars?
I'll go for five bucks.
I've got ten bucks.
Get my renewed every two years.
Ten bucks, we go ten bucks.
I gotta be driving for four years, so.
Ain't goodness for that.
Hey, they'll have that road fixed in five years. You can't die. You can't die right now.
Don't have another, don't have another ton of land.
My first question, all the people in Fairfoot Township, what required to a lack of emissions? All right. Next question, we've had bad drainage for seventeen years. Why is that not being taken care of now?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dragess?
Sixty-two way gate at Wood Run. We've had bad drainage for seventeen years. Where's that been then? Where are we taking care of that?
Which roads are you concerned with?
All, all Fairfoot Township. So you have all the grass and all the trash that lays on our streets, that nutworms taking care, except they said that street sweeper out. Who better for the street sweeper to come out? Not hold all of the residents accountable for their grass laying in the street, clogging up our drains, causing drainage issues. Where's the accountability for that? Or isn't it?
Well, one, one question, the sweeps, the street sweeper, I believe, Ms. Lepenzi wasn't at the county that did that? Who, okay, could we get some answers on that? Because I believe that's a county initiative.
We, we don't own the street.
Yeah, we don't.
Somebody's still paying for it. Yeah, but we're all paying for it. Who's, who's to do it? That's what township doesn't own.
It's wasted money out here.
Every resident, no matter if they live in Bay Harbor, Hamilton, Bay Harbor Township, McCovey, he has to take accountability for their grass and their street clogging our drains up and their trash. And we have nothing. All of that crap goes to my backyard. You ask to clean it up? I do. All the trash, all the grass clippings, all the leaves. The Fairfoot Township doesn't even clean our street, they're not putting snows. They're supposed to all getting out of their driveway. We do. We're in a process. Good job for us. We don't give a damn. So yeah, I completely oppose the five dollars on the levy. Because what should be going on isn't happening. And if I see each one of you come down my street, wet up, and you see your checkbook stuffed out, to hit your eyes on it, I'm like, you work for it. But nothing's happening for me to see it in my neck of the woods. Just out in the main thoroughfare. For everybody else to pass through, but not for the people who live here, who must deal with it every day, who can and cannot get out of their own neighborhood, because people are driving too fast. Who's paying for all of the guardrails that are messed up from the accidents at 129 and bypass? From all the accidents, who pays for that?
Insurance, or the person.
Eventually. Who pays for, who covers the cost initially?
My son bought a guardrail. That wasn't good.
Right, but how many times do I keep saying, "Our resources have to take care of that"? Why aren't our police department out there, Austin, Pittsburgh, just, a crap? Do we need to hire, do we need to hire more? I'm, for hiring more people to do that, but it's not being seen for me. I see no progress, except for the main thoroughfare for people. Come just pass through here. You don't live here. I was in the road for two and a half years, truck driver. Nothing had changed. It actually got me worse. I didn't see no improvement, but the stupid roundabout that we didn't pay for. So yeah, I completely oppose everything. I see no progress at all. More accidents, more driving, way more traffic, way more houses that our roads can't even keep up with. No turn signals, people's phones in their faces. What are we doing about that?
Would you like a follow-up call from either our administrator or our police chief to discuss this?
Everybody, yeah.
Okay. All right, can you go ahead and follow up with, with Ms. Lepenzi? And maybe have our public works director and our police chief follow up. Other comments? Again, please appropriate state your name and address for the record.
Deb Meyer, 3729 Revere Ridge Drive. Um, you mentioned that we have eighty-one miles of road in the township. And if we pay them every five years, I'm in every fifteen years. So my question is, do you have any idea how many we're paving right now? I know you think that's for follow-up information on that, but... So we, do you think we pay like ten miles a year, or three, four?
It's more like three to four miles.
Okay, well, then that's right in line with what we, because fifteen divided in eighty-one is five. So we're pretty much hitting every fifteen years already.
Well, but we can't sustain that. We spent almost a million the last two years. So we won't be able to continue to do that.
So you spent almost a million to pave four miles?
I think a little more than that this year, but if I remember right, I'm not, I probably got...
More money, or a little more miles?
A little more miles. But I want to say we spent three hundred thousand or so on the concrete, fixing the curbs and gutters first. So again, it's, it's not like it used to be where it was forty thousand, uh, four, forty thousand a mile to pay. It's, it's double that to get it done. But, but yes, we, we are on track, we're trying to stay on track. And, and I would think our goal would be four, four-ish, four and a half, just depending on, and some roads have to be done more than fifteen years. Morris Road's a main thoroughfare, and it gets a lot of attention because of everybody that travels, the school schools, and all the cars. You know, you come out of the back of the, the residential area, you get to another little road, then you get to a bigger road. So again, we're not gonna go all the way in the back and pave that street when we have all those others that have to be done, that every car drives on. That's just the logic behind it. But I, I would say that we should, our goal should be about five miles every year, just to try to keep track of it. And again, I remember when, we only had sixty miles to take care of. So now we have eighty-one. That number does go up as the new subdivisions go in.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so a couple of things that could help, um, there are...
There are some opportunities at the State House. If you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind, reach out to our state rep, Diane Hollins, and to our state senator, George Lang, and ask them if they can put more money in the budget for paving for townships. That can help. Okay, sometimes the state sends us money for that, sometimes they don't. The local government fund was clobbered about ten, fifteen years ago, and that was another good source of funding for townships. But it's very difficult for townships, and we all pay money to the state. Some of it comes back, some of it doesn't. But if you could help us out and reach out to State Senator George Lang or State Representative Diane Hollins, and ask them, ask them if they can get more money sent our way for paving.
Maybe put those names on your Facebook page so we know that.
Thank you. Another source of funding that we have is the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Transportation Board. I sit on that board. And we actually have an opportunity this year to put in some money or to put in a request for grant funding with OKI. We think we're in the process of doing that. And that will be dedicated to Princeton Road, because there's money available. But one, it's a competitive grant process, so I think we're in the process of putting that in. But it's got to go down to Cincinnati. It's going to be weighed against other projects. But there's actually a potential that we could get some funding for Princeton Road. I hope so. That's another way that we could potentially get some funding. So those are two key ways of doing that. But overall, I think what we really need to do is, with everything, is pump the brakes. We need to take a look at what we want our paving plan to be, what the state of our roads currently are. And I think we need to take a very thoughtful, intelligent approach to really defining what it is that, what is it that we need to do? Not necessarily what we want, but what is it that we need to do? And that's coming up with our paving plan and then figuring out the money that we have available and just taking that pause and really understanding where we're at and where we need to be. Because it is not my intent to put financial hardship on our citizens. I don't think it's any of our intents to do that. That's not what this board is about. That's not what staff is about. So we are going to try to look at some other options and really get a good opinion on what we're doing overall. And I think it's just important to take that, pump the brakes a little bit. See a little joke there? I tried. But pump the brakes and really look at the finances and see what that looks like for us. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Burin wrote that he is currently out of town on a pre-planned trip, but he's watching online and would like me to read this on his behalf. I appreciate everyone's comments there tonight and last week. We will weigh all these comments when acting on this matter. We don't take this or any resolution lightly. We welcome our residents to reach out to us via email or cell, both which are posted on our website. For any questions or comments, please contact us.
Anything further? Thank you all for sharing. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for spending the evening with us. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and your comments. I truly do appreciate mine and the other board members' too as well. Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Trustee Harkemaier, yes. Trustee McAdrey?
Yes.
We have no motions tonight. Under announcements, our next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Tuesday, June seventeenth at seven PM right here. Our tax, public tax budget, public hearing will be Tuesday, June seventeenth at seven-ten in this building. The township offices will be closed for the Juneteenth holiday on Thursday, June nineteenth. And we have our JED meeting on June twelfth at eight AM.
Just one comment. Trustee Harkemaier. Since we're talking about finances, we are presenting our tax budget at the next meeting. The tax budget is available in my office for review for any resident. So if you'd like to know how we're spending our money so that you can have an informed opinion about the taxes, please ask to see it. I can send it to anyone who needs it.
Can you print copies and hand them out to them now?
It's not ready yet.
Oh, I thought you meant it was ready already.
No, it hasn't been published yet. It's closed.
Ready, but it's like twenty-five pages long.
You can't afford to print that.
We were going to sign it.
So next week, next Tuesday, we anticipate voting on this, voting for or against this five dollar or ten dollar added to your registration. We're also going to talk about a fire levy and a police levy. So if you're concerned about this five or ten dollars, I think you need to be here and hear and have your voices heard. Because we're running at a deficit. We're running at a deficit in safety services and roads. We're running at a huge deficit in the fire and paramedic service. The police is also running in the red, and I've voiced this concern for, I don't know, thirty-six, twenty-four months, a long time now. We've been hiring people without a dedicated stream of income to pay for them in the future, while the future is here. And we have to decide, we already decided as a board not to replace one full-time firefighter, paramedic. We stopped the hiring with the police department. We've hired twenty-seven. That's the largest we've ever been. But we've authorized twenty-eight. We're not going to hire that twenty-eighth one until something else happens. And the road service, road department, we lost somebody. We're not filling that spot. So we are tugging on, tightening the belt, but there's no way we can get by without additional money if you want the level of service that we have grown to be able to offer. And if you don't want that, then it's my opinion that you should get to vote for that. You should get to vote for the fire if you want that paramedic service to show up at your door when you call that number, or the police, or what we've been talking about for two public hearings, the road department. And I think, to me, that's the fairest way is for that to happen. Now, the fire and police levy, we can't do it on our own. We have to put that on the ballot. But we are in a crisis mode here in Fairfield Township. We have spent, we still have money. And on paper, you're going to see this Tuesday night, it looks like we've got a lot of money. And it'll be gone in no time unless we do something, make drastic cuts, or ask for and get money approved from the taxpayers to keep our full-time paramedic firefighter service or our twenty-seven full-time police officers that have their hands full. But it's going to be up, to me, it's up to the voters to decide how that's going to be. We have worked hard to get to where we're at now, but we cannot survive. I mean, we can cut, cut, we can pump the brakes, we can do the things we're talking about. But if you were here at the last meeting, the last regular meeting, you would have heard the administrator show us that we're running millions of dollars in the red in 2026. And we can, townships aren't allowed to do that. We can do it because we've got some carryover money, but there would be some brakes swapping if we don't do something about it. And again, those are where those services, where the money's going to. So if you want to hear more about that next week, it would be a good place to be right here, seven o'clock.
Well, I do want to comment a little bit on the numbers. In 2025, we have about five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars approximately. We do have money to cover that. So financially, we're fine for 2025. In 2026, now I'll tell you this, our general fund, we've got about, I'm going to call it about three million dollars in our general fund. Now, our general fund, as Ms. Lepensy mentioned earlier, we have to go by our funds. Our general fund is actually somewhat unrestricted. We've been very, very careful with our general fund for many, many years, and we have a surplus in that account. Okay, of at least two point six million dollars. So we've got money in that, which covers our 2026 fund. And I'm of the opinion that we should not be a savings account. We're not a bank. And we should spend the money that we have, because my last call, the last thing I want to do is put something out to the voters. Okay, so financially, we're fine in 2025. We're fine in 2026. We have another fund. It's got about four million dollars sitting in it. We can also use that money to pay for salaries. Okay, so I've got money in those two accounts. Now, in 2028, things get, they might be a little bit of a problem. But what I'd like to do is to, again, pump the brakes. We've got some economic development that's going to be coming in, and Schneider Electric being one of those. And we're projected to start getting some money from economic development on that in 2028. I'd like to get a better grasp of what those numbers look like. Same thing in 2029. So we have some financial tools from our tips and our jets that are going to be coming in in those years. And I think we need to get a better grasp of what those things are. But I'm telling you, we're fine in '25. We're okay in '26. Twenty-seven, it might get a little rough. And we definitely, if the economic development funding doesn't come in the way it should, then we will need to do something in 2028. But I think we're okay for '25 and '26, based on the numbers that I have in front of me. And this is still with a pretty healthy capital expenditure and those kinds of things too. But, you know, we're going to be talking more about this. I think it's important that we all have a good grasp on this money, the numbers, the money, all of those things. We originally put a five-year safety services levy on the ballot. What was that? Ten years ago? So we have actually stretched out. The last time we asked for a levy from everyone was ten years ago. And we have stretched that, and that was intended to be five years. Okay, and we have stretched that out. So we should have asked for it five years ago, but we didn't, because we were being very fiscally responsible with everything else that we had. So we're getting near the end of that, but we have done what we can. We've doubled the life expectancy of it. But if the economic development doesn't come in the way that it should in the next three years, we could have a problem. But I think that we need to run our numbers on that. And I've been working with Ms. Lepensy on that to get some more information about what that looks like. Because again, the last thing that anyone on the board wants to do is to put that financial burden on our citizens. Okay? But, you know, that's kind of where we are. And I think it's important that we take that pause, really do some solid financial analysis. And before we rush into anything and scare people and play politics, we need to speak with the data and manage by facts and actually get the finances and the actual numbers and make our decisions based on that. So I'm looking forward to getting some more financial analysis, all this done, and really looking at the numbers.
I don't disagree with most of what Trustee Harkemaier said, but the longer we wait, the bigger the ask is going to be. So to me, a little now carries us for several years if we do our controlled spending. And if we wait two years, it's going to be a whole lot bigger ask than what it could be now. So... Tuesday, ninety-seven. There's a lot of information already on our website. We're going to go back and look at the financial reports that have been out there for the last couple of months. You can see some of the numbers for yourself. And you can certainly ask anytime. You can come over here anytime during the day and get financial information, okay? But we're... To me, we need to act. And I mean, that's up to you. We need to give you the chance to act on it.
Well, I can't say we believe that we're okay, because we wouldn't be here if we're okay. We wouldn't be talking about this. So obviously, there is a problem there, but the problem's not going to be till 2027. Obviously, the problem has to be now. We would be having two meetings. So we have two different reports. So I guess we got to figure it out for ourselves.
We need to work on the math and the numbers.
We, or are you saying we or we? That's it.
Yes.
Yes. So we just need to know where we really are, what our options are, and the leadership that's going to lead us down the road to answer the problem that we have. Because we're here to help you guys to lead us down the road we need to go. But we can't go down the road if we have two different roads we say we're on. So which is it?
You can always request financial information and try to decipher yourself if you'd like. It's hard, because, you know...
A lot of money.
And it's a lot of spending, and it's a lot of different things that you have to kind of read. But financial reports are always available for anyone who would like them.
Let's move to the third.
Sub move.
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAdrey?
Yes.
Thanks for coming out, everyone. Thank you.
Which road are we on?
This is my husband. This is Richard.
Hi, Richard. How you doing? Bottom line is, I've been to several...
I guess I'll start turning the questions.
Sure. Anytime. I read...